Good evening, welcome. I'd like to call this meeting to order. The Bogota Board of Education regular meeting, November 22nd, 2021 at 7:00 PM. Please stand for the flag. Thank you. The New Jersey Open Public Meetings Law was enacted to ensure the right of the public to have advance notice of and to attend the meetings of public bodies at which any business affecting their interests is discussed or acted upon. In accordance with provisions of this act, the Bogota Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting, excuse me, to be published by having the date, time, and place thereof posted in the Bogota Borough Hall, communicated by letter to the record, filed with the clerk of the Borough of Bogota, and posted on the Bogota Board of Education website. Urban, would you call the roll, please?
Mrs. Albrecht?
Present.
Mrs. Coles, absent. Mrs. Lewis?
Here.
Mr. Miranda? Mrs. Oliver, absent. Mr. Ortega?
Here.
Mr. Ruckert?
Here.
Mr. Chavez, absent. Mrs. Van Buren?
Present.
We have the form.
Thank you. Also present, Mr. Kennedy, our superintendent, Mr. Zappacucci, our attorney for this evening, Mr. Eppsell, our school business administrator and board secretary, and Ms. Ruiz, our assistant board secretary. If I may have a motion, please, for hearing of citizens on agenda items only?
Miranda.
Thank you, second.
Ortega.
Thank you. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? If anyone has anything to say, we need your name and address, please. Even if it's online, please put that in the chat or in the Q and A. All right, seeing no one come forward, may I have a motion to close citizens' remarks, please?
Motion, John.
Second?
Second. Idalia?
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. We'll move on to the superintendent's report.
Okay, so there are some change orders on the agenda during the roof restoration process. Project Idahit in Bixby, we've had some water issues once or twice a year after heavy rain. So we addressed some of those issues. The change orders for the high school in Steen, in Steen gutters were installed gutter guards that we've never had, that we can never get a company up there to clean it. So we were able to put gutter guards and new ladders. And in the high school, believe it or not, squirrels were coming over from the tree to the wrestling room roof and chewing out some of the roof, causing leaks. So they had to replace that because they noticed that, and were working with the neighbor to trim that tree back so squirrels cannot get on there. Rose Volleyball won the Group One State Championship last Saturday. Unfortunately, they lost in the first round of the Tournament of Champions, but they had a great year. I think they finished like 26 and 3, so kudos to them. Our open house was very successful. We had a lot of traffic and a positive feedback. Thanks to Dr. Alfonso and his staff, and also big thanks to Mr. Miranda and Mr. Chavez for donating time and resources to make it a great day. Also, the new Bogota Middle School has started their PTO. Unfortunately, Ms. Hernandez cannot be here tonight. She was going to come up and say a few words, but they are off to a good start already. I know they already had some meetings. And now I'm just going to give a quick presentation of the American Relief Plan and our district goals. So just bear with me for one second. All right, the American Rescue Plan, this was our input plan and budget, just to give you a little background. The goal of the American Rescue Plan funding is to provide as much support and improvement due to the effects of the COVID-19 pandemic, to close academic gaps, to provide for lost opportunities for students, create more well-rounded education, support mental health, and use much evidence and research based out of drive decisions. So we did a survey in July 2021, and we have over 500 responses. Students, parents, school staff, and men, and Bogota community members. Areas of interest from the survey and feedback was improving curriculum, technology, infrastructure, capacity, after-school tutoring opportunities, summer academic and enrichment opportunities, indoor air quality, arts, STEM opportunities, and special education. So that was all the feedback we received from the survey. The funding period started in March 13th, 2020, and we have to spend it by September 3rd of 2024. By October 13th, all the funds have to be got. We were awarded funding $2.4 million about, and some areas have to be addressed in the plan that they set specifically for us. And that's the accelerated learning coaching for PD for staff, evidence-based summer and enrichment, and then after-school activities, mental health, and then they give us the fifth category where you can do a lot of different things with those funds. In the first area, we're looking for in-service PDs, out-of-district PDs, supplies and material, out-of-contract hours, because at the end of the day, we're trying not to take the teachers out of the classroom. We don't want to have to do that, so we're trying to do it outside of school hours, and you have to pay payroll taxes. Evidence-based summer learning and enrichment, we started last summer with free summer school for all that were identified. We will continue doing that. After-school activities, right now, we've got 100 kids after school between the Bixby and Steen right now, working with the younger kids, and we're providing enrichment after school and RTI after school. Working with Care Plus Two to help with counseling. And then in the fifth area, this is where we were able to use the money. So we will be able to use for more after-school tutoring and instruction through June 2024, and that's going to pay all the salaries and taxes and supplies, and then continue with the summer instruction. It started this summer, but we'll go Summer '23 and Summer '24 for students that are identified. All right, also this year, we were able to add some positions with the funding, the dance teacher, guidance, social, and RTI. We will have to incur those positions in the future. Some of them were worked into the budget this year, but we were able to use the funds to help pay for that. And then materials that are set aside, new math program, we're trying to do programs and things that are one-time cost, so it does not continue costing the district. HVAC ventilation management system, which we can control from a computer, continuing with mental health services, and our smart boards for the middle school and the Chromebook leases were paid for all that stuff. So that's where that money is going. So in summary of what we're doing, we're going to be providing K-12 summer programs and ELA math and music for Summer '21, which will be his past, '22, '23, and '24, extended school day through the '23-'24 school year. Elementary math program beginning next year, in-service and out-of-district PD, stipends for PD out of contractual hours, Care Plus services, the staff positions that we spoke about, supplies, smart boards, Chromebook lease, repairs for music and maintenance, and then the HVAC honeywell ventilation and temperature monitoring system. So in general, what we identified was is they're trying to close the gap, and by doing that, we're already starting to see the data, we're collecting the data where kids started out with their reading levels, and we have the data in front of us where they're starting to read on grade level already. So the idea is everything in education is tied to reading. Your Algebra I scores are tied to your reading in first and second grade. That's what they look at and tell you if that student's going to be successful. So our goal is to get everyone up to reading level, and we have the data that's supporting it right now. And the next presentation, we want to talk about were the district goals. And that first goal is something that we just spoke about, is close the reading achievement gap in elementary school. So we did some assessments in the beginning of the year, and we identified students that were struggling readers, and our goal is 20%, and we will have the data to show that. So last year, one of our goals was community, getting the word out to the community. This year, we want to engage the community with different programs, open houses, which we like, one we just had, working with the police department with a couple of different programs. We reached out to Baxa, and we will be doing something with them on a vaping presentation very soon. So we want to engage the community in different opportunities. The next thing we want to do is create a three-year strategic plan, and we want to get all the stakeholders involved, teachers, administrators, parents, community members, board members. And this is what we want to, we want to create a path of where we want to go for the next three years and say, this is where we want to put our focus as a community, as a school community moving forward. And then the last thing is, we tried to do this a couple of years ago before COVID, but we want to look at new scheduling options for K-12. In the high school, they do a 1 through 8 period every day, and that's getting old and tired. So we want to create something different, a rotate drop, or we're looking into different opportunities. We want to see if we create more flexibility in the elementary schedule with RTI without them taking out of class, where we could build an enrichment and RTI into the schedule. So we're putting committees together, and we're looking how we can do that. And that concludes my
presentation. Thank you, thank you. Very interesting, very enlightening, all the things that are moving forward. Just for the board, these district goals will be adopted by a resolution probably next month, let's say. You need to make sure that you're comfortable with these goals. This is ultimately what the superintendent is evaluating on when you do his evaluation next year. And these goals are obviously the basis for the plans that they make. In talking with Matt Lee, who's our field service representative, he just, what he said is to remind everybody that the board is informed how it goes, but the administration will set the goals. And if the board does not get involved with how, but they need to understand the plan. So in other words, you evaluate it, but these are his plans, this is the, these are the goals. The administration makes the plans, and then he'll keep you abreast of it as the year goes on, things going there. It's not your job in any sense to be part of the plans. That's his job. All right, from there, we have the minutes for October 12th. Our work session, open and closed, and October 19th, open. May I have a motion, please?
Motion.
Thank you, DC, second.
Second, John.
Thanks, John. Any discussion? Urban, would you call the roll, please?
Mrs. Alvarez?
Yes.
Mrs. Lewis?
Yes, on October 12th, I was not here on October 19th.
Mr. Miranda? Mr. Ortega?
Yes.
Ms. Ruckert?
Yes.
Mrs. Van Buren?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you. All right, we can move on to the resolutions. First up is policy, resolutions 1122, 21, 1 through 15. And keeping in mind, this is the second reading, so they will go into effect this evening. So may I have a motion, please? Motion, Ali. Do you have that? Second?
Second, John.
Thank you. Any discussion? Urban roll call, please.
Mrs. Alvarez?
Yes.
Mrs. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Miranda?
Yes.
Mr. Ortega?
Yes.
Ms. Ruckert?
Yes.
Mrs. Van Buren?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you. We'll be on to education. We'll start with the items that went to consent from our work session, which is 1122, 2116 through 21. They have a motion on 16 through 21, please. Someone?
Motion, John.
Thank you. Second?
Second, Idalia.
Thank you. Discussion? Urban, would you call the roll, please?
Mrs. Alvarez?
Yes.
Mrs. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Miranda?
Yes.
Mr. Ortega?
Yes.
Ms. Ruckert?
Yes.
Mrs. Van Buren?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you. And continuing on education resolutions, 1121, 20, excuse me, 1122, 2122 through 31. May I have a motion, please? Thank you. Second?
Ortega.
Thank you. Any discussion?
I had a question on 22. Is there a specified length of time for this home instruction?
I believe it has to be 10 hours a week.
No, I mean, like, weeks, months.
Um, I believe this one, we're just waiting for a placement at a district. So as soon as we can find one, I know they've been looking already, but we had to put the student on home instruction because they, they got to be at school.
Anyone else? Alrighty, so roll call, Urban, please, on 22 through 31.
Actually, I'm sorry. I did have a question related to 30 and 31.
Sure.
Um, is there a cost delta between this move, in this move?
I would have to find out the exact what they were, what they were paying to what they are paying now. They usually are very similar, but I'll get you that exact number tomorrow.
Okay. Busy?
Yep.
Thank you. A roll call, please, Urban?
Mrs. Alvarez?
Yes.
Mrs. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Miranda?
Yes.
Mr. Ortega?
Yes.
Ms. Ruckert?
Yes.
Mrs. Van Buren?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you. On to personnel, our consent agenda was items 1122, 21, 32 through 35. May I have a motion, please? Thank you. Second?
Second, John.
Thanks, John. Discussion? Urban roll call, please?
Mrs. Alvarez?
Yes.
Ms. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Miranda?
Yeah.
Mr. Ortega?
Yes.
Ms. Ruckert?
Yes.
Mrs. Van Buren?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Continuing on personnel, the newer items on the agenda, 1122, 21, 36 through 42. May I have a motion, please?
Motion, Idalia.
Second, second.
Discussion?
Is 36 the same as the home instruction?
So 36 is approving her to be a home instructor?
Anyone else? If not, Urban, would you call the roll, please?
Mrs. Alvarez?
Yes.
Mrs. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Miranda?
Yes.
Mr. Ortega?
Yes.
Ms. Ruckert?
Yes.
Mrs. Van Buren?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you. On to finance, 1122, 2143 through 57. May I have a motion, please?
Miranda.
Thank you. A second?
Second, Idalia.
Any discussion? Questions? All good? Urban, would you call the roll, please?
Mrs. Alvarez?
Yes.
Mrs. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Miranda?
Yes.
Mr. Ortega?
Yes.
Ms. Ruckert?
Yes.
Mrs. Van Buren?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you. I don't believe we have any committee reports this evening. Under Old Business, just to let you know, I did attend the delegates assembly, which was on the 20th. It was basically an hour. There was no resolutions, no real action, just an overview, and emphasis on some of the programs that they're, they're looking at reviewing their own policies. The in-district orientation, which I had attended on 1118, when I say attended, was online, but that was extremely interesting, and I had asked Urban to send you all the information on that. If you haven't had a chance, please go on there and listen to it. It's, it's based on creating an in-district orientation, it's a book that goes with it, but the information in there is valuable for all of you, because you're all pretty much new board members, you know, within the last year or two. It stresses in there things like the role of a board of education member, you know, not to make, not to run the schools, but to see their run well, and that the board's role basically is making policy. So, and again, the focus being on students and their education and not the day-to-day. So I would really recommend that you take a look at that. The other thing, which I'll put under Old Business, because it was communication that I had with all of you, after last week's meeting, which I said I would bring up this evening, is since there was no forum last year, oh, next year, last week, it did cause, you know, a bit of a stuffle in the office because bills do have to get paid and so forth. So some of the things for you to consider as you move forward at the board, some new board coming in. One is, if you can't attend a meeting to advise, usually you advise the superintendent and the president of the board. I would suggest, if there's an issue, maybe you advise that to the whole board, not a communication email, but just so the whole board knows. So if somebody is thinking, maybe they're not going to go for one reason or another, you'll know that you may need to, for the sake of having a forum. So that's one, one thought. Excuse me. In July, we always cast a resolution which approves the office paying the bills to maintain the district going forward during August, when you don't have meaningful supply. We do that in June. I would suggest, if possible, that you look into a policy that could do the same thing in case there is no forum, so that the bills could have been paid last week in the time and fashion. And I would also encourage everybody to try to get to the meeting, to get to the table. Teachers have to be here, students have to be here. I know that virtual is a lot easier, but in light with what everybody else in the district has to do, I would encourage everybody to try to get to the meeting if you can. Virtual is obviously important if you can't fit in here directly. And as Damian had mentioned, that in the future, if there's executive session, if it's going, if you're going to attend virtually, you really need to be on a headset, because there's no way to know that the conversation going on enclosed is secure. On the other end, you know, you could be in a restaurant, you could be with your family, and that's not right, because executive needs to be closed and QT. So that's my little spiel for Old Business. Anybody else have anything else under Old Business? Nope, then I have New Business. And we are going to have executive session, so bear with me for one minute. Um, this is probably my last meeting. I'm sorry, I wasn't going to do this. I have thoroughly enjoyed doing this. I love it. And I hope you all continue with help and keep your focus on the children, not on personal agendas, not on who's in control, not who has more say and more votes, but it's the children. I think one of the things that I've always thought of the school district is kind of like a house or a home, and each part of that home has a point and a purpose. There's a foundation, for a school district, the foundation is the superintendent, his staff, which is incredible in the office, the teachers, the other administrators in the district. The foundation of the, of the building is the education. The walls is Urban and his incredible staff, all the support that he has to keeping that building strong and standing and functioning properly. And the roof, we're the roof. Our job is to create policy. Then there's the little surroundings about it and trees and flowers. That's our community. That's all the things that are, really make it perfect and shine. All right, so the roof can't do the wall's job, the wall can't do the roof's job. Everybody has their own job. So to try to do someone else's job is micromanaging, and it's not healthy for the district. So keep in mind, the board is the roof, and that means you make the policies. Now, the house has a heart, and that heart is our children. And that is the focus of this home, is for our children, for them to feel safe, comfortable, loved, and educated. And I hope you focus on that as you move forward. I'm, I'm so sore. If I won't be here, I mean, at the next meeting, I just found out today we're probably closing, then fortunately, Jose's not here. He would be the next to one of the meetings. That would be just right. That's the policy we, the vice president does that. If indeed he has a problem, normally, the courtesy would go to the past president, which would be least. So to keep that in mind for, if I won't be here, so to do that, you know, on your own. Um, as far as your future, when you, at your reorg, and you think about your officers and your president and your vice president, keep in mind the house, okay, and the focus is the children in the house. If you really want your president to be somebody who's available in the district, if they need, need some help in the office as far as contracts and things like that, you're all new board members. You're all really, as they say in county meetings, you're all baby board. You know, despite past experiences, business or, or mayor and council or anything, as part of education under 18A and all the rules that go with it and the laws that go with it, you're all newbies. So take your time, get more training. I will beg you for the minute I leave this room tonight. Get more training and focus on that, and just be the best you can for the kids. And the community will respect that, just to say respect to, you know, our administration and so forth. If we all know our role, and we do our role well, it's not chaos, and there's no scenes, and there's no grandstanding. So that's my big spiel, and I thank you all. I have loved it for 40 years, so, thanks. Um, okay. Uh, hearing of the public. May I have a motion, please, for hearing?
Miranda.
Did anybody else, excuse me, did anybody else have anything else in New Business after I've laughed on?
No, no, no.
Any more cheerful?
Other than, thank you for your many, many years of service to our community. It, it doesn't go, you know, unappreciated. It doesn't matter at times, you know, the difference of opinions and visions and goals. At the end of the day, it's time that you put in, and I think that everyone here up here understands today how much time that really requires and what it really takes. You have definitely been a pioneer in policymaking and policy understanding. Yeah, I know that sometimes we, you know, I say we, but myself, we listen, and we don't say much when it comes to that, because we do respect that role you took on. We've watched you, I've watched you in previous meetings, I've watched you serving with you. I've had a pleasure doing so. And hopefully, some of us can take on that task, because it's a big shoe to fill. And because we're junior pony board members, I think that we all have to take a little bit of that task. Whoever's been recently elected, whoever's been appointed, whoever's still here, we can all share that, that overwhelming amount of work you put in. So I truly, truly wanted to thank you publicly for the time you've given us. It's sad to see you leave Bogota overall. You have a beautiful house, someone will truly enjoy it. Someone will truly enjoy it. And like everything, right, we grow and we move on from here. So I just wanted to thank you again.
Thanks, Frank. No, I have a lot of respect for all of you. So just keep loving the kids and focus on them, and everybody, nobody focuses on their own issues, and we're golden. If there's somebody else on the New Business, if we could have a motion, please, for hearing the public?
Miranda.
Thank you. Second, please?
Second.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? No? All right, so if anyone has anyone? Welcome, Susan.
There a microphone there? Transformer. Why don't you, she can speak into that one?
Yeah.
It's on, right? Like, the green lights on?
Hello?
Yeah. Yeah, you're going to be sitting there soon anyway.
Hello, everyone.
Hello. Um, so I just, I just have like a little proud mommy moment, but I also- You have to tell us your name. Oh, Susan Cruz. 193 Walnut Avenue. Thank you. Um, I want to thank the Burton Community College and their high school partnership program for including Bogota High School, and also a special thank you to our school for being involved and participating in BCC's early college program. This is a really incredible program and a great opportunity for our kids and for our students to take part of. When my daughter was able to participate in this, we were sort of under the impression that, well, we knew that she would graduate with 60 college credits, which is associate's degree, which is a pretty cool thing. But we were also told that they may or may not transfer to, to any college or university. They most likely would transfer to a New Jersey state school, but knowing that she wanted to go out of state, we thought, well, at least it'll look pretty nice on her application, college application, which, which I think it did. But I wanted to let you know that we just found out two weeks ago that her private out-of-state school just accepted 30 of these college credits.
Nice.
So, yes.
Nice.
Very cool. That's a whole year of college.
Yeah.
So I just, I want to encourage students to, to do this. So, I just, I want to encourage students to, to do this, if they have the opportunity to, to really, um, it's expensive, but it's so worth it, and it's, I don't know if there's any way we can set up scholarships for these kids, to get them involved in this program, um, it's just, it's a really great thing to be involved in, and you may or may not get all the credits, but you might, you might, if you go to another school somewhere out of state, you never know. They might take three credits, they might take thirty credits, it might take all sixty. So, it's, it's, it's really worth it, and it's a great program, and I just want to encourage students and, uh, families and teachers to push their kids to, to get involved in this program. So, thank you.
Thank you. Alright, we have no one at home, or one, first question, may I have a motion, two close citizens' comments, please? Thank you, second?
Second, John.
Thank you, John, any discussion? On favor?
Hi.
Any opposed? If I could just build on what Susan just said as well, even if the credits don't necessarily all transfer, there's a lot of high school graduates, no matter how, what their education is, they get to college and it's very challenging, it's a different kind of studying, a different focus, a different discipline, and I think that's an excellent, an excellent opportunity for kids to be able to mature a little bit in what's to be expected in college, so, thanks for sharing.
I, I would also say that I think we need to encourage more students, maybe open up the bandwidth. What is the top amount of children in our school system, is it top ten? Is it the top twenty, because, yeah, just as Kathy said, they're mature, they're prepared a little better to go into college, it's a big place. And kudos to Carmen, right, we don't say how much work the child put in to get where they need to get. And Villanova, I'm assuming that's what, sixty thousand dollar savings, uh, give or take? Eighty, eighty thousand, I mean, from a little old Bogota, well, most people don't equate the numbers to, that's eighty thousand dollars. I mean, if you subtract the seven thousand or whatever it may be, but it's still seven thou, seventy thousand dollars we've brought home to a Bogotian family household, the child who put in the work, so, I would hope to see the top fifty, top sixty, because I think a graduating class of eighty-some, I, so if you get top fifty, that means everybody's performing. Hopefully, our, you know, our educational substance here continues to grow, where people can, uh, where, where our youth can continue to flourish in those type of programs. So, kudos to Carmen, Carmen Cruz, kudos to the parents who pushed her along, because we forget that, and kudos to our district that we can even be proud to say we saved someone money, we got them credit, and we pushed them a year along, a pretty difficult school system, so, thank you to everyone for that.
Alrighty. Nothing else, uh, we do need executive session. So, I shall read, whereas C two thirty-one P L nineteen seventy-five, also known as the Sunshine Law, authorizes a public body to meet an executive or private session under certain limited circumstances, and whereas said law requires the board to adopt a resolution at a public meeting before it can meet in such an executive or private session, excuse me, now therefore be resolved by the Bogota Board of Education, that it does here, one, it does hereby determine that it is necessary to meet an executive session on November twenty-second, twenty twenty-one, at seven thirty-five, shall we? We went with seven four. Seven thirty-five P M to discuss matters involving personnel. That the matter is discussed will be made public when confidentiality is no longer required, and action pursuant to said discussion shall take place only at a public meeting. May I have a motion, please?
Motion.
Thank you, second?
Second.
Thank you, any discussion? On favor?
Hi.
Any opposed? Alright, I expect there should be five minutes, and the action will be taken on our return. Thank you.